Recording in progress.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one and the other, indivisible, with liberty and that for. Public presentations. This is the time for persons who wish to address the council on any matters on this agenda and over which the council has jurisdiction. As such, a dialogue with the council or staff is not allowed under the Ralph and Brown Act. Item requiring council actions not listed on this agenda may be placed on the next regular agenda for consideration if the council directs. Unless a finding is made by at least two thirds of the council that the item came up after the agenda was posted and is of an urgency nature requiring immediate action. Please limit comments to a maximum of three minutes. Does anyone care to say? No, are there? Say, yeah, that's.
They're asking.
Okay, but it has to be something not on the agenda. So I think it's on the agenda. Any hand raised, any email? Yeah. You want to close public presentation and move to the consent calendar. There any? Anyone who would like to remove an item from the consent calendar?
Oh, number three.
Okay, or your number three? And anyone else, anyone care to remove anything from the consent calendar, any staff, any emails? Okay then, is there a motion? To approve items one, two, four, five, six? Four, five, and six. I said, you have a motion and then a second, second, you have a motion and a second? Motion carries four, zero. Item number three, Councilmember Wilson.
Yes, one, uh, city manager. I just have a question on that, the tower. This is a different tower than another tower that we have.
So the tower that is under discussion here is the Bismarck Ranch River Tower, so that's the tower up on, uh, on the top of, uh, the platform. Is there a separate location you're thinking of?
Well, we have another one that we, I think we're tied into, uh, McMurray.
Yes.
On that one.
At US Center.
At US Center. Because I, is this? And the reason I'm asking is because I wanted to get to a different internet service and I talked to T-Mobile. Recently, they're right, and they said that they need the service. I couldn't get internet through T-Mobile.
Okay.
At that point, they, you know, put me on the way and asked them, is this going to have anything to do with? Possibly enhancing, the man of your question, enhancing their reception here in the album?
Uh, yeah, so my understanding is that it is an upgrade to the, uh, or it is a, uh, it would definitely add, you know, T-Mobile connectivity in this area, but I don't have any more details on in terms of other cellular services or anything like that.
Okay, good, it looks like they're moving towards doing the, so not just sort of right. Optimum is going to bring how you can now unless you go. I don't want people to have T-Mobile and they get, they get the internet through them.
Yeah.
Besides the fault, I think you can get internet through T-Mobile.
You get hotspots and I believe, uh, another one in the queue is, uh, uh, is US Cellular is upgrading their services as well. And, uh, and then, uh, uh, we recently just did some work with, uh, oh, what's where do they call that?
Verizon.
Verizon for the placement of their generator out there.
That's all this will do. Anyway, that's one.
Make motion to.
I would make a motion to approve.
Thank you, does anyone have any questions about the power, hand raised, email? Do you have a second? Second, you have a motion and a second? Motion carries the council member Woodall? Motion carries four, zero. City manager staff update, page forty-six on our package. City manager.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Garance, members of the council, so, um, we are anticipating a town hall to be scheduled here shortly, um, and I don't have the authorization to release the proposed date at this point in time. Um, but I want to make sure that so folks who want to, uh, attend the town hall related to the earthquakes and their response recovery, uh, just keep your, uh, eyes and ears peeled, uh, for an announcement possibly as early as tomorrow on the date of that evening, uh, town hall. Um, other than that, uh, obviously there's a, you know, interesting smart system rolling through the community, want to encourage everybody to stay safe on the roads. Uh, reduce your speed and, uh, and try to stay safe. So with that, I will return back to the mayor to see if there's any questions or comments to staff.
Thank you, city manager. Mayor Proton? I have no questions, thank you. Councilmember Woodall, I wanted to ask chief, um, is, what training is Mary going to do right now?
She's going to back.
Oh, what was it?
It was a registered law woman.
Okay, thank you. Is that that? Councilmember Wilson?
I'm good.
Yeah, I have no questions, are there any questions from our lovely people sitting in the audience? Any hand raised, any emails? And we will move on to the presentation, uh, mid-year financial report for fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty-three. Page fifty-one in our package. There's that will go up this track, there it is.
Good evening, Mayor Garance, members of the city council. The mid-year financial report describes revenues received and expenditures incurred as of December thirty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-two. This report will cover any significant budget variances in the mid-year as well as projections for the venture of fiscal year. We adopted two thousand and twenty-two to two thousand and twenty-three budget for the city redel with eight point nine five million, but revenue is estimated to be eight point oh four million. Total city revenues exceeded total expenditures by approximately twenty-five thousand dollars in the mid-year. If revenues are adjusted for the final ARCA or American Rescue Plan Act revenues of just over four hundred thousand, expenditures exceeded revenues by three hundred seventy-four thousand. The difference is primarily due to capital and special project expenditures along with the city revenues are historically received. Most revenues are received in the second half of the fiscal year. Forty percent of revenues were received as of mid-year amongst the city's major funds. This is the same percentage as last fiscal year. General fund revenues are slightly down due in part to the one-time two-hundred-and-ninety-five-thousand-dollar power resiliency grant fund received last fiscal year to install fuller power at city hall and purchase generators. Submental Law Enforcement Services Fund and TDA funding were also higher as additional funds were received in the first half of the fiscal year. At mid-year, over two-point-seven million or twenty-eight percent of the budgeted expenditures were recorded. Operating expenses were forty percent of the budget, a three percent decrease over last year. The recycling solid waste fund saw increased costs due to the initial cleanup costs associated with the aftermath of the earthquake. And again, these were only expenses captured by the thirty-first of December. The general fund received twenty-one percent of budgeted revenues as of mid-year. The city's largest source of revenue, including property tax and the vehicle license fees, are received in the second half of the fiscal year. Cannabis revenues were fifty-five percent of the budgeted amount compared to nineteen percent last year. And this is a result of better budgeting last year, uh, in response to the industry downturn. Forty-two percent of total general fund appropriation was spent mid-year, which includes capital and special projects. The street fund revenues increased by eight percent. This is attributed to increases in the gas tax as well as S V one. The enterprise fund, which are water and sewer, receive, our water and sewer fund, the sewer fund received fifty-one percent of the budgeted revenues as of mid-year. And that includes all fees, charges, penalties, and new sewer service connections. Expenditures were fifty percent of the budgeted amount, with the treatment plant loan to be paid off in two thousand and forty-three. The water fund has received fifty-three percent of expected revenues as of mid-year, but did not see a year-over-year, uh, increase in revenue in part to the water arrears money that was received last year as part of the pandemic. Water expenditures were at thirty-nine percent at mid-year, uh, due to budgeted projects that have yet to be concluded. The first half of the year showed that predominantly revenues and expenditures stayed on target at their budgeted levels. Yet, as we all know, the earthquake and winter storms place an extreme hardship on the city and city resources. Rate payers for water and sewer services may decrease due to damaged tunnels, and nearly all costs of the recovery effort have been taken on by the city upfront. City staff is working with Cal O L E S to ensure that maximum reimbursement for eligible expenses is claimed, which is a minimum of seventy-five up to a hundred percent reimbursement. Additionally, cannabis revenues continue to, uh, struggle due to the, the industry. We have been able to rein in our budgeting process and make more accurate predictions for the upcoming years. So that helps with budget projections in terms of revenue and, uh, expense appropriations in terms of doing special projects and capital projects for the city. Uh, again, state-based formulas for street revenues are not sufficient to cover the maintenance required. Um, and this has been offset by investments in the general fund. And again, um, we've seen a lot of the purchases with the slurry seal project, which is included on this fiscal year's budget. The economic outlook continues to be hard to forecast as inflation, supply chain issues, and, uh, the lingering pandemic, uh, issues continue to play the economic forecast. Overall, revenues into the city are at historic highs, however, on the flip side, operating costs continue to grow including dispatch, labor, animal care, other, uh, safety, software, and insurance. I'd like to thank you guys for your time this week, guys, this evening, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, manager. Um, I thought these were really.
Just one, one question on the wastewater and water, uh, channel. Uh, because it's because of the damaged houses, there's going to be less use of that. How does that affect the people that are, um, I believe the waste of water makes you pay, but the wastewater, I think you have to pay your, uh, what do you call it, administrative costs?
Right.
Even if, even if you're not using it.
Yep, so the base rate would still be in effect. Um, this would obviously lower it down to that base amount. Um, and then if people are leaving the town, vacating completely, then there would be no way to collect, uh, or anything like that. So that was kind of the, the basis on a possible decrease in that revenue if, uh, if citizens aren't able to occupy the home.
There's, there's no cases where the, the people aren't able to get their, their service because of the, any damage to the sewer system?
Uh, damage is no, so the sewer system will still collect, uh, and still operate in power on the private side. There may be, uh, there, there is going to be a fair amount of damage on various random private laterals, including potentially, you know, disconnections on some of the red tags, the foundation goes.
It is already, it's already thought to, and this is probably more of a chemical question, whatever, is to some kind of a relief, uh, like we did on, I think, on the water, if you have a leak, you know, it was something that applied to that time, that there would be some kind of relief for the red tag people to be able to get it, get their stuff fixed so that they can use it.
Um, so we would have to take a look at the ordinance, uh, in place as to whether that, uh, is, is allowable, um, because the value of the property is affected by the, um, adjacentness of sewer services, and so that's part of the reason why those charges uh, uh, occur on properties that are vacant or not used.
Like, why explain the concept, I'm just saying that for the people that are red tagged, I mean, they got enough problems as it is.
They did not want to be there.
Huh?
They did not want to be there, they're not voluntarily not there. They're there because they can't be there.
Is, is, I'm just asking, is there something the city?
Can do.
Can do as like a moratorium thing to give them some relief? Anything helps at this point?
So I think in, in that case, we would have to look at, uh, with the city attorney, uh, changing the, the ordinance itself and altering the ordinance to adjust for, uh, to adjust for that, so it's a little bit different than, uh, a resolution dealing with a, a policy within the framework. Uh, you'd have to fundamentally change the, the ordinance, so that's a first reading, second reading type of thing with the attorney balls.
That would be to, um, like, just, um, add a natural disaster clause or something like that?
Yeah, if there is none that currently exists.
Could we look, it can, I guess you have to ask the council, but is that something we could look into?
Yeah.
To do it, to get, to help? We, you know, we said that was our top priority with the red tag.
Right.
Yeah, so it may not be as old warming to the city as it is to an individual that's trying to do get his life back together.
Yeah, that, that's the consensus of the council.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Any questions, thank you Travis, always so straightforward. Thank you, thank you Travis, any questions? Audience, any hand raised? Any emails? Then this is, um, just, uh, receiving the file, well, thank you very.
Uh, to kind of receive a recap of the, uh, five-year pavement plan. I think we've lost two or three views, um, and.
Recording stopped. Recording in progress. Recording stopped.
Okay.
Recording in progress.
Okay, so my apologies, we have a little bit of a glitch there, so I will recap for the audience on the television. The, uh, so the city council, uh, in their five-year maintenance plan set up, um, established some prioritization for the streets, uh, to focus on. And that would be, uh, that one of the, one of the prioritizations was that, uh, that we shouldn't be paving, we should be focusing on the roads where, uh, we're reasonably sure we don't have to dig up the roads to replace the underground, uh, infrastructure in various locations, and so the council of the past, uh, four, five years has spent over, uh, one-point-six million dollars out of the general fund uh, to subsidize, uh, was the current pavement projects that we have experienced over the last, uh, several years. So, uh, those are, are generally, uh, basic maintenance pays where there was no need to do alterations to, uh, the underground infrastructure, uh, for the most best part, other than slight drainage work, and then, uh, whatever you pave the road, you also have to do when you do a, uh, you, even an asphalt overlay, you, you have to make sure that, uh, all the sidewalks and whatnot are meeting the ADA standard, so cross connections between, uh, intersections and whatnot. Uh, so that's required, it's recently, you're not required to do that, uh, that, that level of maintenance on the, on the roads. So we have progressed, uh, pretty significantly through the five-year street maintenance plan. Uh, there's still a little bit of work that needs to be done, but, uh, but essentially the low-line, uh, easy projects have been covered at this point. And the remaining streets that we do have, including Second Avenue, uh, involve significantly more work than simply an overlay. So to give you an example, uh, Ogul Street, which has had, uh, significant drainage issues for a very long time, uh, possibly predating incorporation of the city. Um, you, you know, the, the, uh, drainage situation out there needs to get fixed. And so the council was able to appropriate some funds in last year's budget to do some engineering, uh, design, uh, to, to get some, uh, materials ready for bid. Uh, so we're still working with church engineering on that, uh, on that particular project. Um, yeah, Second Avenue also, and so, well, backing up to Ogul, you have not just drainage issues, but you also have sewer line issues and primarily water line, uh, issues. So we are expecting to have a signed agreement sometime next month in March, uh, to move forward with our water capital improvement project. Um, that, uh, uh, so that particular project will knock out, uh, these, uh, uh, issues on the water side for, for those roads, so Second Avenue, um, Ogul and some of the other more damaged streets will receive, uh, corrections to their, uh, water lines in those, in those streets. And they'll be closer to meeting that, uh, criteria to be paved. Um, Second Avenue is specifically, you have drainage issues there as well. Water and sewer infrastructure that needs to be, uh, replaced. And then any existing sidewalks on those two blocks, uh, would also have to be, uh, would have to be the, the ADA definition for, uh, uh, corrective repairs to the sidewalks there. So, uh, so again, one-point-six million dollars to get to where we're at today on relatively simple projects. However, the ones that we're moving forward on now and need to move forward on require a higher degree of engineering, require, uh, significant underground repairs, uh, to the various streets, uh, in order for the final product to be, uh, you know, a workable product that doesn't create a new problem. So one of the problems with, uh, Second Avenue in particular is, you know, just doing an overlay there tomorrow, it doesn't take care of any of the underground infrastructure, and it potentially actually creates a larger problem with drainage. That would be the same case on Ogul Avenue and, uh, on, on some of the other streets. Uh, I believe Elk is the other one that's, uh, in, in pretty bad shape. Uh, so these are the, the complications that we face, is that the bill, you know, really climbs for these, these, uh, the remaining projects. We're likely going to have to have, um, grant funding to cover the cost of that, because there's sense of engineering that has to happen on the water, wastewater, all the infrastructure underneath the roads and the drainage stormwater conveyances. So one of the last projects that we did was, uh, working on, uh, trying to get income surveys and C D B G, uh, certification for the, for the Ogul Street project, and unfortunately, we didn't get enough respondents responding to that, uh, particular request, uh, which would have provided funding for the drainage work and potentially some, uh, of the asphalt work that needs to be done out there. Um, so I think the threshold, particularly with community involvement with Second Avenue might be easier to achieve because it's a, it's a, you know, it's a tight, we're talking about really two really bad blocks. Um, and that we might be able to, uh, you know, put together another, uh, income survey so that we can potentially pull down C D B G funding, put in a grant application to do those, those two streets from top to bottom. It's essentially a total street rebuild. And one of the reasons why we do the slurry ceiling is because it's significantly cheaper to do the maintenance upfront than it is to do a full street rebuild. Um, so those are kind of the challenges that we're facing. I don't have any accurate cost on what it would take to, uh, to redo, uh, the two blocks in Second Avenue. Uh, and similarly, I don't have the pavement costs engineering for Ogul or, or the other streets. So that could be something that we incorporate into this next year's budget, uh, is to do additional pre-planning, which helps us to do the, uh, grant applications and gives us the time to be able to do the income surveys, um, to try to put together a package to see if we can get those, you know, those major projects funded. Because likely, um, Second Avenue, my guess is it's going to, that, even just two blocks because of the, the infrastructure needs there, the need for a pretty extensive engineering um, across different, different infrastructure segments, you're probably talking about a, a, a million-dollar project just for those two blocks. So it's, these are, you know, significant dollars when we've already kind of pushed the envelope in, in terms of, uh, you know, one-point-six million dollars at this point in time. Um, so, so with that, I, I'm happy to, to, you know, answer any questions that the council may have and, uh, you know, see what, uh, where the council would like to go from here.
Thank you, city manager. So if are there C B G, the C D B G funds, like, if, if there were, uh, income survey and, you know, all the, if all the blocks that ticked, are, are there grants out there, or is there the B G G? C D B G.
So the, you know, that is how the rest of the avenues got paved, so Second, Third, uh, with the exception of Dixie Street, um, that is how those got paved over twelve, twelve years ago. Um, and again, I think the strength, same strategy was implemented, which is to try to cover as much and many of the blocks. And then that project ran out of money and then the, kind of the most expensive and the most difficult portion uh, didn't end up getting, uh, paid. So, so it has been done before to utilize C D G funding for these types of projects. Uh, the, the state would love a project like that because there's very clear before and after pictures, you know? This is a very terrible street in a terrible condition. Um, so I think it, it potentially could work, but it, it's not something that we can do this summer.
Yeah.
But, um, but I think it is, uh, it is, it's possible to do, so.
If, if, when we have a sewer grant, would that be included? That infrastructure?
So with sewer side, there's still a lot of work that has to be done in terms of cammering and evaluating the system. And then we're getting, uh, potentially some brand, uh, additional brand funding to do that. Um, I think this would almost have to be a one-off project where the, the water line should be taken care of by then. But you have, you have sewer, uh, ADA considerations that need to be addressed out there, and that's what the grant would hopefully cover. And they, they do, in the C D G program, um, allow for that types of infrastructure, but again, it has to meet certain national objectives. And so you have to, unfortunately, in Real Del, you have to conduct income surveys to verify, uh, the income levels of those benefiting from the street project, and it has to meet a certain criteria for, for it to be potentially fundable. So, um, so it's not an easy task, but it is, it is something that, uh, has been done in the past. Um, uh, but again, this is a fairly significant, uh, outlay of dollars to get, uh, to Ogul Street where you can spend on those, on those two blocks.
Thank you, councilmember Wilson?
Yes, the, the, when you do the.
Yes, the 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 when you do the 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 income survey, does it can it be narrowed to where it only applies? To the two blocks that you're really trying to focus on?
So yeah, so that would be the the idea is you uh identify the beneficiaries of the project, the direct beneficiaries of the project. And you and you narrow it into a specific scope. So I think this one would be relatively straightforward. Cause there's no offshoot lane or anything like that on uh. The Second Avenue, it would be basically house to house uh there. And so what would be beneficial that Ogle Avenue did not have is a community group uh helping. Uh to encourage the other residents on the block to fill out the income survey. In order to get the projects uh towards funding. This is, this is the difficulty on on uh on Ogle, on the, excuse me, the north end of Ogle. Uh where uh, you know, it it. Just the income surveys are just not getting turned turned back in. And for often, you know, obvious reasons, people don't wanna be filling out income forms and returning that information. But in order to pull down CDVG funding, you have to have those uh those forms filled out. And almost house by house, I think you gotta get like at least eighty percent or more. Of the residents that uh responded to the surveys. So it's a very high bar to get and um. Uh but it's possible to do.
Well, I just, you know, where there's there seem to be some people that are. Have, you know, the best interest to make, they're coming down to the council meeting. Yeah, they would pick up that burden to go, you know, door to door and say, hey, look, if we wanna get things done. We gotta, we gotta at least fill out these forms and participate with the city so everybody can go together and get this. And it it seems like it should be. At least at least to get the survey should be achievable. Um and again, we must the residents, and maybe some more key people. There to go and probably other people, what I I would would be something I would sit there.
Yeah, and I think we we would need to discuss the timing of of that. Because we would essentially have to uh file a whole new project under. Uh a NOFA, which is acronym for Notice of Funding Availability. And so those typically only occur, you know, once a year. Um so you'd have to make sure that the timing is correct to make that application. Uh because the CDVG funding is competitive based, so so you're competing not just with. You know, uh large cities who get typically get a standard allocation, they don't even have to get uh to compete with it. But the other cities are kind of stuck. Uh competing against each other for a very limited pool of funding. But uh on the flip side, we have delivered these projects before. And I think visually, uh there would be a very clear before and after image that, you know, that the funding agencies really like. So whereas, you know, sewer, you do work on the sewer, it's kind of unseen, it's kind of same with water. Um but when you're able to incorporate a comprehensive project and have that nice, you know, asphalt surface at the end. Uh the funding agencies to like uh.
Well, I would hope that we could make that make that a priority on the list of things. Along with all kind of things, uh that we can, we will try something to make this, at least give it. Longest shot and try to make it work. Just my my opinion.
Mayor Puna, I would love to see Second Avenue get paved. Um. So I was just gonna echo what everybody has said so far, that since we do have a little bit more community involvement on this side. But it's really, really well, and I wanna thank you all for being involved and showing up. And and um I guess in a roundabout way, offering to help, cause that's what we're signing you up to do, so. Um so I do appreciate that. It is a pretty terrible street. I I avoid it. I drive a Prius. My car hates it. Uh I I do get it. I love to see it paved. Um it sounds like we are doing. What we can do and and try and we have talked about it before. Um and um try to. Get some money to do this, but yeah, you guys would help us get people to fill out the surveys when the time comes down. But no questions. Thank you.
So when they do the income survey, we could do it and they could not qualify also, right?
That that is a possibility, so uh depends on what information the survey, you know, comes up with.
The first step is to do the survey so that.
Yeah, it's like a mini census.
Yeah, um and you were saying there's certain times that we can start this and go for it. Do you know when that time during the year would be?
I I don't know the off the top of my head.
Oh, that's right, but we can find out so that we'll know when, okay, um. The the that road has been, the whole time I've been on the council, it's always been that we can't afford it. And you know, at some point, we're gonna have to do something. It's not fair. You know, takes values of homes down when the roads are that bad and um. I think we've kicked the bucket long enough. I don't know how we're gonna do it. I mean, we're gonna start where we can start and try to get this fixed. And um in the meantime, I'm just wondering, is there any small ways to make the road? Better right now or it's I or it's not, it's beyond making?
Keep up on the difficult patch and things like that, and then the edges are just rock, so we can kind of rain rock. But the problem there is you get the vehicles off the road, you can't really be able to do that.
Um oh, I was just wondering, cause I thought even if we could do a window there, tell before we could do something else and um. Yeah, I think it's good that we look for grant to use the CDVG. Is there um? Could we budget for a study or something to what it's going to implement in the next?
Well, my recommendation would be, cause we're about to be entering budget season. Uh is that we work with the city engineers, see if we can get the scope or kind of a some uh. Feasibility analysis or maybe even some preliminary design. So we get some cost estimates um that we can also submit in grant applications. Uh so we would uh, you know, try to incorporate that into the budget for this upcoming.
I'd love to see that. Either that we budget for the study. That's all the questions I have. Thank you, and um I think, I I mean, I agree with everyone, you know. We need to put it on our list of now. Let let's look at it and see what we can do and do what we can do. Um if there's any way to make it more passable in the meantime, that would be good and um. I just want, you you know, I would like you all to know that. Because there's so much underneath that needs to be done, that that's really the the greater holdup is is that it is. So much underneath that needs to be done, so much infrastructure. And now we're in this unfortunate post earthquake situation. Where funds have gone out from the city that, you know, um so. Now we're gonna set back a little bit more, but I think along with everyone here, from a street perspective. We wanna put second right at the top, as like um Julie said, that stop taking it down the roads, that start looking at it. At the, you know, budget time, but I'm just. I guess just please be aware that now with the earthquake, we are at a unfortunately. Back, we're two steps back. And so um but we definitely wanna wanna be there to hear you. And it is, I think, as you can tell, all of our to 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 address this issue. Would you like to say anything?
I would like to say that I understand it's three and a half blocks, not just two. Maybe it's just two for the underneath part that needs to be done. But it's it's three and a half blocks that are just terribly, can't you drive down the right side of the street? It's it's horrible. And any adding of the asphalt to like cover it up for a while or or put a band-aid on. Is just gonna make the drainage problems worse. There's absolutely no drainage. It all goes into our yards, under our houses. We've got this much water up at you step outside. This much water, that's you can't even stay dry getting in your car. It's dangerous. It's not safe. It's not healthy for anyone. And it sure is not a street to be proud of. I'd like to be proud of my street. We deserve it.
Absolutely, you did, yeah. So, well, any hands, right? Any emails?
Um. Just one other question, uh didn't, when when we first hired Travis, weren't you doing a lot of uh grant researching?
Yes, yeah, that was one of the roles that I.
I know you moved into this capacity. Uh is it something that we should look at if I get somebody to to pursue grants? Um like you were previously for some for stuff like this, I've been told in other agencies that were on the. The bank of your buck for the way you pay for a grant writer. For what you get if you get a grant is more than outweighs the cost of the of the grant writer. And is that, so I'm asking if that's something we should look into?
I think it's something that we're always looking into, grant funding opportunities, like the city manager mentioned with the CDVG. That could be the best route of action to get something that could take on that entire. Go for the project. I think it boils down to, we wanna have a road that's lasting. Uh and lasts for many years to come, we need to take care of the work underneath it first so that we're not re digging it up. And rededicating that project over and over with the proper engineering. That takes into account proper elevations for sidewalks and streets. Um so this is a multifaceted issue that I think needs to go in steps. And once we get to the point where we're looking to capture that grant funding, that is certainly something that's at the top of our list since. Uh the city certainly can't finance that on its own.
So it's also, the grant writer wouldn't be something we would need immediately, it's something that. You have to do several steps first to get.
If I could jump in on that, um so I I think we we have to kind of look at the overall picture of the city's budget and financial picture. And kind of look at the, look at the entire system holistically, whether we need a grant writer, whether we need additional resources to the police department. In particular, a grant writer would be somebody who is gonna be fronted at the very least with general fund dollars. And these are very scarce dollars and that primarily go towards funding the police department. So there's a, there's a balance here that has to occur. And I don't think it's wise to look at any one specific issue from meeting to meeting and say this is the priority. We have to incorporate the discussion into the the overall budget discussion as to to figure out the best path forward. That the council wants, given the fact that we don't have unlimited resources. So uh I just wanna encourage this to be, you know, part of our conversation at other time as to whether the priority is to. Uh to continue to subsidize the street operations or hire a grant writer or. Uh uh hire an additional uh police officer. Uh and then in the context of also maintaining adequate reserves in the city's financial system for for. Un uh unanticipated events such as earthquakes and that sort of thing. Uh so I just wanna encourage the council that, you know, uh we wanna use the budget process to look at the entire system. Holistically and come up with the best plan that meets the most needs in the community.
Well, I got your part of mine. I understand what you're saying on the whole, looking at all the stuff, the overall budget. But are there are there grants, I'm not a grant guy, I don't know. Overall, the grants are, are there grants that are out there that possibly we don't know about? That because we haven't had time to find those and know about them, or is it just a limited amount of grants that apply? Say for the, it 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 just, it was just the infrastructure or what? Parts that would offset this to make this thing work. Is there something we're missing that we couldn't be doing to try and go after? Something that even exists?
Yeah, I mean, uh I would never say never that there isn't some sort of grant out there. But typically on transportation grants, you're gonna have a really tough time finding grants that will cover residential. Um uh residential street. Now, there may be grants available for large infrastructure projects, so for example, the ATP project where we did some reconfiguration. Caltrans right away. Uh that was a pretty significantly sized uh project, but. Going towards a residential street, uh there's typically not going to be grant dollars available. Other than s- other than CDVG.
Thank you.
I understand the ADA is the ATA, American Disability Act. And the um California Disability Rights people are interested in what's going on here. And I will, I would like to know when these grants are gonna, when the applications are coming out. Cause I'd like to get on it right away. You know what I'm saying?
Is there a timeframe or the the next time study is done? I'd like to know that. Is is there a timeframe that it's only good for six months or do you know the answer?
So yeah, so as I stated earlier, the timing is something that would have to be looked at and worked out, so.
Well, I think, if you have something to say to this there, when can we find this out? Because if if you want us to go out and get these uh income uh statements, then we need to know when. And how fast it has to be done and.
I think once the um notice of funds available, when those kind of things come out and and then. The city can make aware of them, then at that point, that's when the city can reach out. Um that is an answer we have to give you right now. So, um but I I think that um addressing it at the budget. Looking at it, yeah, I mean, budget comes up in April, May, that's where we start talking. Um that that probably the likely, as the city manager said, the best way to address it. The only way to really address it because we don't have funds to just put out there, so um. Does everyone agree that we will look at this as the budget costs come up? That, city manager?
Direction of the council.
Direction, okay, I understand. Um we would like to look at this. A part of the, a part of the holistic look in when when we get to budget time. Now we will move on to approved approved resolution. Number one five seven three dash twenty twenty three, amending the safety element to include a brief discussion on December twentieth, twenty twenty two. January first, twenty twenty three earthquakes and to incorporate the county local hazard mitigation plan. By reference and to include the real deal element of the LHMP and the safety element. Page fifty seven in our packet, city manager.
And I think we have uh Mr. Caldwell on the line, if he can hear us.
I can, thank you very much. Uh as the mayor indicated, this does start on page fifty seven of your packet. Um the safety element is one of seven state mandated elements of the general plan. It along with the land use element, the circulation element, the housing element, the noise element, the open space and conservation element. We actually adopted the current safety element in twenty sixteen. And what we're recommending here is that we incorporate a brief discussion of the recent earthquakes in the seismic. Portion of the safety element. Um basically update the safety element to reference those recent earthquakes. And then also to incorporate the local hazard mitigation plan. Um the local hazard mitigation plan and the safety element are really closely related. Um both documents try to identify and prioritize um vulnerable areas in the local community. Those areas that are subject to flooding or dam inundation, earthquake, landslides, fires and that that stuff. Um the LHA, the LHMP was actually adopted, the county wide one, which included the city of Riedel. Was actually adopted December of twenty twenty. Uh the city actually worked with twenty three other local jurisdictions. And developing the local hazard mitigation plan. The city manager played a key role for the city. Um in providing input for that plan. And one of the things we need to do, and it's something that was required by Assembly Bill twenty one forty, is that you have to incorporate the. And one of the things we need to do, and it's something that was required by Assembly Bill twenty one forty, is that you have to incorporate the local hazard mitigation plan into your safety element. And what that does, it makes um possibly additional funds available through the California Disaster Assistance Act um to help cover and maybe cover all of that twenty five percent local match. Um so what we're doing tonight is we are gonna update the safety plan to incorporate that brief discussion regarding our local recent earthquakes. And then to include the local hazard mitigation plan. And if you look on page sixty nine um of your packet, it talks about the safety element. And then on page, excuse me, I have got a a sore throat and a little frog in my throat. And on page seventy, it talks about the local hazard mitigation plan. It's a brief discussion, basically about two and a half pages, two pages. And then starting on page seventy three is where we actually include a a reference to the recent earthquakes. Um which would supplement what we have in our seismic discussion of the safety element. So uh I hope you all had a chance to take a look at it, go over it. And with that, if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them. Um if not, I would recommend that your council approve resolution fifteen seventy three dash twenty twenty three. And then we can actually provide that resolution to our local O E OES coordinator, which of course is the Sheriff's Department, Ryan Derby. Again, I'd be more than happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Um Mayor Wilson?
Um no questions, but I really, really liked your maps at the very end and all the models of different quakes coming from different places and floods and stuff. Um I think the visual really helps understand if what we're at work and when we're not. And then I'm going, where where's my house? Where am I? Um anyway, so no, I I think this is well thought out and I'm fine with Mandy.
Thank you. Councilmember Woodall?
No, no questions. How great idea. Thank you. Councilmember Wilson?
Just uh I think just one question is we're just thinking types in FEMA, we didn't, we've had no, you know, really really anything to help us with the FEMA from the FEMA, by having this in our ordinance, would this give us more leverage to have gotten off the way there here?
No, unfortunately. I apologize for interrupting. Unfortunately, the FEMA threshold is really a a monetary threshold. And from what I understand, and the city manager can correct me if I'm wrong, I believe it's sixty five million dollars. So this won't help us in terms of FEMA FEMA relief. Um it will potentially help us in terms of the California disaster assistance relief in our uh in our twenty five percent share ultimately. That is the intent here, and you never know until you actually make application.
All right. I I just see the way that some stuff that's happened locally on, not locally, but on the news. One minute FEMA was gonna help, and then FEMA wasn't gonna help, and then FEMA was, because they got there was obviously some other pressure that we don't have here um to seemingly get some attention to disasters.
You know, and you know, once again, I I believe the city manager pointed this out a number of times in uh press releases and discussions with 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 local reporters. Um economically depressed communities, rural communities are at a disadvantage when it comes to FEMA relief. Um if we had one house, one hundred houses that were red tagged, that were basically destroyed, and those one hundred houses, for example, valued maybe twenty five million dollars, um that would not pass that threshold. However, if one hundred houses in Napa or Malibu or Long Beach were destroyed, of course, they would exceed that sixty five million dollars threshold, and they would be eligible for FEMA relief. Again, it's a uh it's disproportionate to rural communities, to poor communities. And unfortunately, um we are a rural, fairly poor community up here in Riedel.
All right. Thank you for that clarification.
Thank you. What do you, do you have any questions? No, um any handwriting? The mail? Um thank you, Kevin. Appreciate you being here. Hope to feel better. Um is there um a motion to approve resolution, the first reading of resolution number fifteen seventy three dash twenty twenty three, amending the safety element to include a brief discussion of the earthquakes and to incorporate the county local hazard mitigation plan?
Mayor Gardens, if I may, um resolutions do not require a second reading. So once this resolution is approved, it is approved. We do not have to come back to your council for a second reading.
Okay, well, thank you very much for that. Um so it is their motion to just approve the for getting a resolution. Yes, we have a motion. Is there a second? Second. We have a motion and a second. Uh please vote. Motion carries four zero. Thank you, Kevin. Feel better.
Thank you very much.
And now we will move on to council reports and communications. Mayor Wilson?
Well, just all I have is the uh I had our RCA this Thursday, the way that we worked out. You're usually you're you're having one one week and one the next week, the California Division, both first and the third. This is is that it's 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 the week later. So anyhow, we have RCA Thursday to go over what they're going.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Mayor Wilson?
Uh yeah, I went to the school board meeting. It was last week, I think. Yes. It was last week or the week before. Um just to touch base and get, you know, here where they're at with earthquake recovery, it sounds like they're much in the same as we are as far as fill out papers, wait, 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 fill out papers, wait, wait, wait. Um they did get one classroom fixed, which is great. Um there is no news on the gym fixes, but they are also pursuing um, you know, funding that covers the public state agencies and and they're they're doing what they're doing. Um they are also, it sounds like doing a really good job of supporting their families who have been displaced outside of Riedel, uh providing gas cards and whatnot, so the kids can still get to school and their enrollment really isn't down. So looks good. Um and beyond that, I have a rate up meeting Monday. That's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Woodall. Um Thursday, I'll be covering the HCO meeting for Councilman Board. Um no news from Sabatian meeting tomorrow. Um on February twenty seventh, the Resource Center is sponsoring um Coffee with a Cock with Coffee Bean divided by Doc, Chief Allen, Corporal Landry, and CFO Mary Clark will be there. But it doesn't say what time.
Oh, whoops.
Pardon?
I think it was ten o'clock at all.
Ten o'clock. We think it's ten o'clock. We could have gone to find out. And it would be great if people could come on down and do that. I went to the board meeting of the fire department and they gave me a list of all the calls they took late December and January. And I forgot to bring them tonight, but I'll bring them and we'll give each one of you because it's pretty impressive. I mean, I that's um Mickey, wh- when is the new fire truck coming?
Should be next month.
Next month. They're getting a new fire truck next month.
They've been saying that since last March.
I know.
Definitely hoping they they did their last success. Check on it when they went back there. It should be coming out by two.
Okay.
Then they go exactly stopped and then they, he stopped it all up down there and then it'll come back up.
Who gets to go down and drive it back up? I'll go with them. But that's gonna be exciting. And um that's about all I have. Thank you. Thank you. Um Menzel, I think we can bring it to a close. Is there a motion to adjourn? So their motion is their second. Sorry.